The January 27th special meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order, President Miss Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Superintendent Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxine Cannelli, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Ask you to all please rise for the pledge. Okay, for anyone who might be tuning in from home, this is a special meeting. Our regular meeting will begin at 7:30. The purpose of this meeting is a discussion and first reading of Capital and Capital Nonrecurring 2022-2023 projects. Usually, when the Capital Waterfall Summit is held in September, the board will be reviewing these projects November, December for approval in January. Being that the Capital Summit was delayed and happened in January, we're seeing it a little bit later. Hoping for a first read tonight, and we might need a special meeting next week to approve these projects, to get them on the agendas of the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance, to move them forward. Being that we are short on time, I will cut right to the chase with Mr. Cummings. I don't know if you have anything to opening remarks, if you want to give it right to Mr. Papa George.
No, let's bring Mr. Papa George up. Thank you.
So what you have before you is the book that you're probably used to seeing at this point, for those of you that aren't new. For those of you new, this is the book that we put out every year. It's the Capital and Nonrecurring Projects. There's a couple of photos on the front of it that give you kind of an overview of what we're trying to be, what we're going to be doing this year, or what we're looking for approval to do this year. I did include this year two different documents as well, that you'll see, Appendix 1 and Appendix 2. Appendix 1 is just an overview of the capital planning waterfall. It's that summary sheet. We put that in there so that you could have it as a reference, you don't have to look for it. And there's also something new in there this year is, for the large project that we'll go over shortly, the air conditioning project, we put a cash flow sheet in there by year. So it helps break down and helps understand a little better what the cash flow for this project would be versus what the ask is for it. If you look at the first title page there, you'll see that our ask this year is $25,57,627 for all projects. But if you reference back to the cash flow for that, you'll see that our cash flow for the fiscal year '23 is really a total of $3,510,009. That's the actual bonding we're asking for this year. It gets a little confusing when we start talking about totals for projects, and I just wanted to take a minute and explain that when we ask for a project such as the air conditioning project, we're asking for the total amount of this Phase 1, which is the The reason we're asking for that amount is not so that we run out and bond it now, it's to show the cash flow in the chart, but in order for us to apply for reimbursement from the state, the state wants to see that the town has backed and is willing to fund this project fully. So that's why we asked for the funding for the project, even though we're not bonding the entire project upfront in there. So that's a little brief understanding of why we're asking for what we're asking, and then the breakdown of the cash flow. Just to go briefly through the projects, you'll see that there's a boiler project for Burr Elementary School. For those of you that don't know, Burr is a unique school because it has boilers that are located on the second floor of that building. So the plan is that because one of the boilers is showing fatigue and has leaking issues and needs to be replaced, and the second boiler is not far behind it and is in the same vintage as the first one, they were both installed when the building was originally built, the plan is to do both projects at the same time because of the unique situation of getting them up to the second floor, getting the old boilers out of the second floor. So we are planning to move forwards with both boilers at the same time at this point. So that's why you'll see that $996,370. There's a breakdown in the book that shows you what the cost is, what the design costs are, contingencies, they're all broken out in the book for you. The second project you'll see there, I'm sorry, does anyone have any questions about the first project?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, I didn't know if we were going to ask at the end, but as to the question of replacing the two boilers at the same time, was there any thought given to doing one and then another in a successive year? I mean, I could see this being a two-year project rather than a one-year project. Is there an advantage doing it all at once?
There's value engineering with doing it all at one time because it's bringing the crews out at one point. And again, one of the biggest reasons we're choosing to do them both at the same time is that there's, because the boilers are located on the second floor, there's an extra step there to getting the boilers up to the second floor. We're talking with different contractors. One of the options that's been put on the table for doing this would be to actually create a hole in the gym wall and be able to move the boilers out through and lower down into the gym and then back up. So that's, looking at that theory and needing to do that this year and then turn around and patch it all and do it again next year is the reason we chose to do them both in the same year.
All right, I appreciate that, and I may have questions for the architects of this building, but that's beyond your scope. Thank you.
I think a lot of us do.
Any other questions right now about the boilers? Okay, move on.
Okay, the second project you'll see in this is the elevator at Fairfield Ledlow High School. This is the elevator that services the lower area, the art rooms, the wood shop rooms, the computer labs on that lower area below the gymnasium. This elevator was down for quite a few months at the beginning of the school year. Because of the vintage of the elevator, parts are no longer available. We actually had to take the control board out, sending out, send it out to, pretty much from what it was explained to me, a gentleman sitting in his garage who basically rebuilt and re-sodded all the connections, and with fingers crossed, we reinstalled the board and we got the elevator working again. I say that kidding around, the elevator has been inspected by the state and is still, is in safe working condition at this point. Our concern is that if something does go wrong with this elevator, we will not be able to get it working. And other than the option of going outside the building and walking around to get to the lower level, this is the only other, that's the only other way to get there without utilizing the stairs to get down to that lower level area. So again, you'll see the detail breakout in this book as well for this project, if there's any questions about the elevator.
Any questions about the elevator? Moving on.
Moving on, so here you will see the Fitzhouse rooftop units. For those of you familiar with Ward High School, Fitzhouse has the air conditioner rooftop units that were installed quite a few years back. The Fitzhouse units, there's four of them up there. There was one replaced a few years back, and the other three are at the end of their life expectancy. They've been giving us some, quite a bit of issues, and we do have gentlemen almost daily when they're up and running full, to make sure that they are running and staying up and running. So again, a decision made because of the specialized equipment and cranes to get these, this equipment up onto the Fitzhouse roof and off of the Fitzhouse roof, there was a decision that was made that said that value engineering would cost-effective make this project better to do all at one time as opposed to bringing cranes out and back several times. This is, it's quite a large unit, the three of them that remain, and they use their, it's not a quick pick type crane, it's a heavy-duty crane because not only of the weight of the equipment, but also the reach over the actual building is so far, and to get to it also makes it difficult because of the fact we can either reach from the front of the building in the bus lane or from the back by the tennis courts. The easy pick obviously would be from the street, but because of trees and power lines, we can't do that. So we need to utilize larger equipment and larger cranes to actually make this project happen.
Ms. Jacobson?
I see that in the description, you say that they are, have like a roughly 30-year timeline, lifespan, what have you. So as we look to add the air conditioning toward and on the waterfall, these are compatible with the plans that would coincide with that project?
Absolutely, these are already under control, building control, and we would just create, build out from this.
Any other questions about the elevator? I mean, the roofed, the air conditioning unit? Is, just going back to when the first one, is this Board of Finance, Mr. Walsh, I think, asked about doing them all together? Why were we doing them one at the time? Is this the same rooftop? Is my memory correct on this?
I would have to review and look back at that. I don't know if it was asked or not.
And supply chain issues with the last time this was replaced? Or do we have concerns? Is it getting better?
It is getting better. There are still long lead times for this type of equipment, so that's one of the reasons you're hearing us to, excuse me, one of the reasons you're hearing us tonight is so that we can try to move these projects along.
And if approved, the plan would be to have it done over the summer?
That would be the intent and the plan, but at this point, there is no guarantee of that. So we may end up doing a very early summer next year project with this, but the intent is to get them ordered and on their way as quick as possible.
I'm remembering an air conditioning unit on a boat in China a couple of years back that was not able to come forward, is that correct? I think it might have been this one, so looking forward to moving this forward. Okay, moving on.
Just in seeing this going through the town purchasing department, does that present with any delay concerns? Or is that pretty standard and we don't feel that that would be a reason? Supply chain is one thing truly out of our control, our own Fairfield staff is another area of concern, but do you see that being an issue with this having the potential to be for this summer?
Not at this point. We've been working very closely with our contractors, and they're still optimistic at this point. That could change on the drop of a dime unfortunately, but at this point, we're optimistic for this project to happen this summer.
Okay, but my concern wasn't the contractors.
Yeah, more in terms of town purchasing being able to get it out to bid.
Oh, no, I don't foresee any issues with that. We actually have past precedent set because of the first one we've done, so we should be able to move quickly on getting designs and bill documents ready for a bid.
Ms. Asa?
So I know you've, we'll get to this, but you've provided the cash flow worksheet, but what kind of issues or potential issues exist with if we don't get this done in time? And how that affects our bonding and whatnot spilling into next year is when we already are planning out big numbers? Does it have any effect?
I don't believe it would, it should not have any effect because whether we can get the units actually set in place this year, this project would need to be bonded so that we can place the orders and the deposits and everything upfront for the equipment to arrive.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Maxine Cannelli?
Just one other question. What summer programming does this impact or not? And again, not as a reason to delay, just wanting for information purposes.
We usually run a few different special ed programs at Fitzhouse Unit, specifically at Ward, in the Fitzhouse Unit because of the air conditioning, so we would have to find alternative homes for those.
Okay, moving along.
Moving along, so the last pro, excuse me, the last project you'll see on the page here is the air conditioning of one, finished air conditioning project for one of the middle schools and two of the elementary schools. What this does is it provides a first phase for the air conditioning of the district. This would, this would complete the air conditioning project at Fairfield Woods Middle School. This would add air conditioning to the un-air-conditioned rooms at Osborne Hill and North Stratfield Elementary Schools. When we met with the waterfall, we were asked to come up with a plan that would add air conditioning to all of the building, complete, I should say, complete air conditioning of all the buildings in a five-year plan. I'm hoping tonight with your approval that you will accept a plan that is one year beyond your expiration date, and it brings us out to a, all buildings started within a six-year window and completed within a seven-to-eight-year window. With that being said, one of the reasons we spread them out a little more was to make the cash flow more even when presenting to the other town bodies so that we weren't asking for larger sums of money at one time. We were able to divide it out and make it more of an even flow with cash for bonding purposes. Fairfield Woods Middle School was one of the hot topics and one of the big pushes at the beginning of this whole discussion, so that's why we see that here tonight. The other two schools were, again, there was no, they weren't picked because of other reasons other than how the best way to make the money flow and sit at more of a neutral across the long-term plan. The other, the only other thing I should mention is that the, out of the $3 million, $3.5 million ask for this year, that is reduced because the town has offered the $1 million AP, I'm sorry, I'm saying it wrong, the ARPA, I'm sorry, the $1 million from the ARPA request, and that's also accompanied by the $116,000 from the SR2 grant that the board has received. So that's, that has reduced 1.1 because of those grants.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelli?
Just a couple of quick questions. I had thought that the million-dollar grant part of the issue with that was that it had to be spent this year, so that's not the case.
That's correct.
And then, secondly, and this is just a wording, first of all, I'm thrilled to see that this is a definitive plan, which is moving forward to the other town bodies, and I hope this is something that we can publicize, that parents know that this is an action being taken and being considered by the other town bodies, or as it moves on, sorry. The only wording thing I just, because it bothers me, but to say in the second part, purpose and justification, this project justifies as it would create equality, well, Phase 1 is not doing that, and thus I have a problem with that phrasing. It's not creating equality yet, so I just have to put out there, I would appreciate that being rewritten.
We will rewrite that to say that, working towards equality.
Thank you. And again, obviously, right above it in the background, that's acknowledged, but it's, that jumps out at me. And then the other last concern I had, and I just lost my place, it had talked about that the concerns, you know, the importance of this, of improving the air quality as the pandemic, a significant deficiency during the current pandemic, the lack of air conditioning, but wasn't it also the mechanical means of fresh air? Is part of that, that this would improve?
That is correct. So this, these units and adding this air conditioning also increases our abilities to bring in fresh air through our DOAS systems and our air conditioning systems. So it's all coupled as one underneath the air conditioning project.
So again, just for anyone who's looking at this, I would just think that in that last part of the purpose and the justification, the lack of air conditioning and lack of mechanical means of fresh air, and I'm only thinking because I did read, I've read arguments against this of, well, it's really only for a couple of weeks of the school year, a couple weeks, August, September, and June, and that's, why are we spending this much? And in fact, there's months involved in what this equipment would be servicing the school district for the health and safety of our children and staff. So again, just a suggestion that it should go beyond lack of air conditioning.
No, I mean, I think that the V, the ventilation aspect of the project is very important just in terms of bringing in mechanical means of fresh air, both for the health and safety of the people in the building, but also the building itself, which, you know, we don't talk about that often because we're so used to talking about it that it's almost a given, but when you look at what happened with McKinley, when you look at what happened with schools in Westport, actually, schools across Connecticut, you know, that is also an impetus to moving these projects forward, looking for cost, potentially major cost aversion, avoidance, avoidance in the future. And your point is well-taken, Mrs. Cannelli, we're going to be actually discussing this in Finance Committee, just in terms of talking points around this project, that it isn't just to keep people cool for a few months out of the year, that it is multifaceted and looking at it as a long-term investment for just keeping our buildings healthy.
So again, those would be my suggestions in terms of the purpose and justification, and I suppose I should ask, does that mean this is the kind of thing we should be amending before we vote on it next time? Or, I know we know this, this is solely as a purpose for, you know, when the other, when it's seen elsewhere in town. I don't need an answer to that right now, but, Ms. Vitale, if you could just consider that.
I will consider it. I don't know if we have to amend this document. We'll take it under consideration. I think the town is really looking for the number more than the detail, but, Mr. Peterson, I think that we can take a look at this when we're in Finance Committee and do a little wordsmithing, and if we can do some edits before it goes forward, and in the process of it moving forward, we'll definitely try to make that happen. Mr. Asa, your hand up?
Yeah, so with regards to this document, thank you, Mr. Papa George, especially for the cash flow worksheet, but on page five of six of Appendix A, you've listed the reimbursement totals here, and I was just wondering if you could touch on, we've talked in the past about AC as a standalone project may or may not be reimbursable, how it's done, we're obviously going to have to be working on life and safety code issues, fire sprinklers, bringing other things up to date in doing this LED lighting, et cetera, if that's needed. Can you just explain quickly what we could expect on AC project reimbursement?
So the number we used was the standard that we use, which is the 26% reimbursement from the state. There's nothing, as we reviewed state reimbursement criterias, there's nothing that says an air conditioning project does not meet the criteria of reimbursement, but there's also nothing that says that an air conditioning project does meet the criteria. So at this point, what we feel that we need to do is put it forward, get the funding approved so that we can move, move the project into the state so that we can actually get some answers back from the state. And there's options, you know, we can apply to the state for the reimbursement. If we get denied, there's other avenues and other ways to appeal it, so we will do every effort possible to make that this is a reimbursed project.
And where do we stand currently with the state and the guy like leaving and them not replacing it that handles this process and whatnot?
Thank you for bringing that up, but so, due to some of our colleagues up there, we were able to move some things along, and we actually have, for those of you, I know you're referring to the Roger Ledlow Middle School roof, which is now out to bid as an approved project from the state.
Okay, thank you for that. So that makes me feel a little bit better on this, because I think we are going to want some definitive answers on whether this scope of work will be covered. So I know in our reviewing, it isn't covered, it is covered. I would want to get a legal opinion on that before we move this to the town bodies, because I want to put that with it. I would like some sort of confirmation that we're going to be looking at 20-plus percent reimbursement on reimbursable items of this. The other thing that, you know, I just want to say, and I'm probably in the minority here, I'm very excited about HVAC upgrades and bringing all the schools online. I've said it before, that I think this is a very aggressive timeline. I think it looks and sounds great, but I do have serious reservations at the numbers. And I appreciate the spreading out how you did from a cash flow perspective, so a $24 million project is really a little bit this year, 10 million, 10 million moving forward. But we can't forget everything else that's on the waterfall. So that cash flow worksheet is great for the AC projects, but we've got to remember that we've got to add that to the existing projects on the waterfall. So when you look at, you know, 23 million, 14 million, 28 million, then we go down to 5 million, that's great, but then we're up to 34 million. So I think, I personally don't see how these numbers will ever get approved. I could be wrong, hopefully I'm wrong, but I also know that the town is going to bond so much, whether it's as much as they've said before or it could be different, but I think we need to be cognizant of that, and I just share that as my opinion.
So I just want to point out, and you probably understand this and you probably already realize this, that the numbers on the actual waterfall for those 30 millions are not broken out over the years, those are total project numbers. So there will be some cash flow differences from what you actually see on the waterfall versus the other.
But it will be significantly more than we have done in the past, correct? And significantly more than we have been told in the past is what we should be doing?
The numbers, they are, they are higher than what we've done in the past, so yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. I just want to observe to Mr. Asa's point that at the Capital Planning Workshop, this was brought up, and this was actually the primary topic of conversation, the amount that the town would feel comfortable bonding and not exceed its, you know, its limit of, you know, spending 10% of the budget on debt service. So, and during our discussion, and again, this was an initial discussion, but it, you know, was offered by several members of the Board of Finance, that we may have to move things off of our waterfall in order to make room for these large projects. So I understand that we are, you know, we're still in the early stages of this discussion, but those were topics that were absolutely brought up at the workshop, and that I think that as we go forward and think about how to pitch this to the town, we'll have to, we'll have to address.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelli?
Just one very quick follow-up to Mr. Asa's point, and I hadn't noticed this at first, but is there a reason in terms of reimbursable that Ward and Walter Fitzgerald have zero? Lines 19 and 20?
No, I apologize for that. We'll have to check the waterfall spreadsheet. It looks like there's a calculation problem with the cell.
Okay, thank you.
And to follow up on Mr. Peterson's comments, I mean, at the Capital Waterfall Summit, a lot of projects were presented from both the town and, you know, and the Board of Ed's HVAC project. No real decisions were made about what was going to be moving forward, so we have some follow-up meetings to have with the town to see what projects are going to align, the town projects with the Board of Ed projects. So I appreciate that this might change, but this is just a, you know, a start, a start for us in terms of what we're looking at, and the next step will be working with the town to see how it aligns with the town projects. Mr. Peterson?
Now, I just, I just add the observation that First Selectman, Selectman Kupchak's plan with the summit this year was to put everything on there, to make all the requests, and then to go through and filter and prioritize. So the numbers were large all over the map, but, you know, I think that there's no reason for us not to aggressively advocate for what this board has said unanimously that it wants.
Agreed, and just in case for those who might not have listened, the First Selectman was talking about having a committee of just stakeholders to review these capital projects because there was a long wish list, our wish list, which we are, you know, aggressively advocating for, and then just a number of town projects. So those are the next steps from the town's perspective, but for us, wanted to bring it before the board, to show you where we are, and just move it forward. So as I mentioned, we'll get the dates for when these projects will go before the Board of Selectment and the Board of Finance. It should hopefully be within the first few weeks of February. I don't have exact dates yet, but I might be calling on you for a special meeting next week just to approve these projects. We can do it either in person or, you know, depending on time, even do a virtual meeting to get this approval moving forward, because I don't want our approval to hold up the town moving their projects forward. So I appreciate the ad, Mr. Papa George, and getting this to us today. Any, any other questions about the projects? as mentioned at our meeting on Tuesday, when we were talking about the Fairfield Ledlow High School scoreboard, that there was some work being done on this that we could not share, do the two contract negotiations, so I'm asking for a motion that the Board of Education hereby moves into executive session to discuss Fairfield Ledlow High School scoreboard contract negotiations per Connecticut general statute CGS 1-206, and invite Superintendent Cummings and Mr. Papa George. Can I have a motion? And she's not on the agenda. Can I have a motion? Ms. Jacobson, second by my Mrs. Gerber. All in favor? Okay, we're going to move into the superintendent's conference room.